So I'm gonna call the Board of Supervisors, County of Del Norte, State of California, into session, into special session today, and ask the clerk to take role, please. Just for the record.
Okay. Supervisor Hemmingson.
Here.
Supervisor Finnegan.
Yep.
Supervisor Howard.
Supervisor.
Supervisor McClure. And Supervisor Gitlin.
Okay, well, maybe they'll show up. Is there any other board here that has a quorum that wants to open up the meeting in conjunction with this meeting? No? City, Harbor, nobody? Okay, good, cool. All right. So let's, real quickly, let's do some self-introductions to see who's here. Start right here.
Jerry Hemmingson, Supervisor District Four.
And Dave Finnegan.
Chris Howard, Supervisor District Three.
Go ahead.
Gretchen Storey, County Council.
Big Karen, County Executive.
Jennifer, City Republic.
Susan, Department of Public Health.
Stephanie, Department of Department of Health.
Debbie May, Director of Health Services.
Emily, Department of Department of Health.
Melissa Lockwood, American Department of Health.
Cynthia Long, Department of Department of Health.
She will appear, R.A.G., Department of Department of Health.
Donna Parker, School Board.
Don Olson, District and County Office of Eds and Penitentiary.
Steve Godla, Delante School Assistant.
Eric Davidson, Chair, Captain. Not paying attention.
We're zigzagging, just to throw you off.
Thank you. Ciao.
Yes, you get in. Very good.
Want to remember, members of the House?
Kevin Rock, Department of Department of Health.
Good thing you're here, you're not like Anthony.
What's your department?
Becky Dalton, Department of Department of Health.
Paul Black, Department of Department of Health.
Michael McClure, Member of Delante County Board of Supervisors. I apologize, I have another meeting.
That's fine. And I love it when people try to go to introduce themselves, they know their name and they forget which committee they're associated with at this particular time. We all wear so many different hats. Okay, we're not, we're gonna go ahead and start the movie, it's about an hour long, it's "Raising of America." I'm not gonna give a heck of a lot of preface on it, there is gonna be a community showing of this one here in another month, I believe. May 26th, Elk Valley Rancheria, there will be refreshments there, there might even be some wine there, huh? Oh, wow. Fantastic. So we'll stay tuned for that. This is gonna be the nucleus. So out of this, after it's done, we'll, I don't expect, we'll spend a lot of time, but have some discussion and possible direction of what we can do as policymakers and as advocates to start spreading the word, policies, changes, whatever needs to be done, to turn our community into a more family-friendly community. And this is gonna be a heck of a point of conversation, I think, once you see this movie. So, without a heck of a lot of further ado, thank you for attending, welcome.
Is Patty waving at you?
Do we have public comment?
We can do some public comment right now, or we can do it afterwards.
Are we gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Huh? Okay, well, then, let me do this, let me have Supervisor Hemmingson, since it is a board meeting, lead the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll take a brief public comment.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance, through the flag of the United States of America, and in two republics where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And excuse me if it just seems so less stressful in here, I don't know why, but I guess we should stick to asking or inviting public comment at this time before we do anything more. Any public, anybody? Public comment? Anything under the purview of the board?
Anybody? Anybody?
Oh, you set me up.
Hi, I'm Patty Van Nelson, First of five Del Norte. And at the meeting last week, when the Board of Supervisors unanimously voted to create a children's budget, Children and Youth Budget, and a Children and Youth Bill of Rights, David, you handed me the resolution, and it really belongs to the board, because everybody in this room is proud of what you all did, and so I wanted to present it back to you.
Wow. Well, thank you very, very much. And I'm gonna turn it over to Supervisor Hemmingson, who sits on the future facilities, and he's gonna find the right nail on the wall out there to hang it in a prominent place. So, thank you very much. And with that, Athena, why don't you introduce yourself? We all did self-introductions.
I'm Athena Shideris, Delta Program Director for America's Charity Services, Associate Captain of the Department of Department of Health, and on the First Five Commission, and local funding hospital, and I give the honors.
Potter.
And what?
Anna Potter.
Anna Potter.
Very good.
Teacher Sandy.
Okay. Make yourself comfortable, go ahead and start the movie, and then we will have a brief discussion after.
How long is this movie?
I don't know.
One hour. It's one hour.
Should've brought my record.
Yeah, maybe you guys need a better.
I think Mike's better than ours.
I've never met a child that I didn't think was full of tremendous potential. The question is, what aspects of the environment are invested in the child being strong, resilient, confident, and capable? What worries me the most is that I see many instances where a child has been let down by the fragility and inconsistencies of their environment. Have we decided that we're okay with the fragility of this system? The fact that it's gonna fail kids? Isn't the investment early in the lives of all children? A long-term investment in our social well-being and success as a society?
To imagine how the U.S. will do tomorrow, we need only ask how its children are doing International data sounds alarming. Across multiple dimensions, the well-being of our children ranks 26th out of 29 nations. It all begins in infancy.
A baby has a brain. We all have brains. Never you think, make you talk, you see, walk.
The development of the brain is laid down in the early years, well before children start school, even before they start talking. Everything starts from the bottom.
The baby holds everything up.
If we don't do it right early, it's harder later, we pay more for it later, and we don't get as good an outcome.
Forty percent of our five-year-olds are not ready to learn when they hit kindergarten. Seventy-five percent of all young adults are not qualified for military service. In 1970, the U.S. ranked first in high school and college graduation. Today, we fall into 23rd in high school graduation, 19th in college graduation.
We say we're a country that care about children. We make care of them some half-strange way, but we want to structure our economy and our systems to support them.
The damage to our youngest children is just incalculable, and the cost to society, therefore, are incalculable.
These children, right now, with three and four, are gonna be 23, 24, 20 years, not that far away. So, yes, we have a crisis, but we have an opportunity at the same time.
As a society, we have the potential to do so much more than we realize we could do to support children. We can win by thinking as a larger village.
Dr. Renee Boynton-Jared is a pediatrician and researcher at Boston Medical Center.
Dr. Renee, look at my dog.
Pretty scary. How are things going at home?
Freezing.
I mean, fingers growing too fast.
Every day something new.
Absolutely, I love it.
Okay, that's not scary. He's a boy, so he's the big brother.
Dr. Boynton-Jared has supported four-year-old Amy and three-year-old Kara's development since infancy.
Three years.
As she has hundreds of children.
We as a society value productivity, we value engagement and civic participation, we value education.
This is an amazing.
Often, the work that we do to support those outcomes occurs very far out from the time in life that is laying the foundation for achieving those outcomes. If we look in the actual scientific literature, what predicts high school graduation rate? Third-grade reading level is actually a very strong predictor of high school graduation. Well, third-grade reading level is predicted by the number of words you know when you're two or three years old. So, what predicts the number of words you know when you're two or three years old? We can track that back to the enrichment of your environment at the very earliest moments of your life, the very earliest stages of your brain development.
More than 80 billion brain cells, that's how many a baby is born with. But it's the connections between cells that matter, and most connections are not yet formed at birth.
Beginning from the moment of birth, 700 new synapses or connections between brain cells are being forked every single second in all parts of the brain that are responsible for everything from being able to regulate your feelings, to begin to learn language, to begin to understand how to interact with other children, to begin to solve problems.
She's speaking to herself, how do I get?
Connections that basically become the architecture, the foundation of who we are as people.
Joelle Lee is four months old. By the time she is three, her brain will have built trillions more connections than all the stars in our galaxy. Those intricate circuits start getting paved into wider, stronger highways, building the foundation for more complex skills like reasoning, impulse control, even compassion, trust. But Joelle Lee's brain connections aren't built on automatic.
They are reinforced by characteristics of your environment.
Everything you do.
They are reinforced by experiences that you have.
Especially through the exchange of small, everyday interactions between an infant and her caregiver.
Yeah, are you happy?
One type of exchange called serve and return is crucial.
You are the most important people in her world right now.
Serve and return is a very powerful interaction on a biological level. I see this in clinic all the time, it's really amazing, thanks to watch, I'm talking with the parent, and to get the parent's attention, the child babbles, and the parent turns from me and begins to smile at the child, encourage them, say something to them, the child smiles back at the parent, and the child will be delighted, because they've succeeded, that they've captured the attention of their parent, they've gotten this wonderful engagement that's reinforcing the way in which the child is developing. And the more practice you have at activated growth circuits, the stronger they become. It's a use it or lose it phenomenon.
But what happens when a baby doesn't have that practice? When serve and return is limited, or disrupted, or withdrawn? We can see one important response in the classic still-face experiment, first conducted by Professor Ed Tronik and colleagues.
Everything new in the room, and she uses it as a way, the still-face experiment, what the mother did was she sits down and she's playing with her baby. So good. And then we ask the mother to not respond to the baby. The baby very quickly picks up on this. And then she uses all of her abilities to try and get the mother back.
I can guarantee you, that baby was not given a course in child development, that baby was not told, if you don't get good response, do everything you can to indicate distress. Babies pick up on that right away, because their brains are wired to expect responsiveness. At a moment that a baby is not getting responsiveness, that is triggering a stress response. Automatically, instantly, our heart rate goes up, our blood pressure goes up, our blood sugar goes up, our inflammatory system is activated, it's the basis of the fight or flight syndrome, it's life preserving.
When the threat has passed, and a baby feels safe, secure, and nurtured again, her stress reaction returns to normal.
The problem is the chronic repeated activation of that stress system, takes all of these physiological changes, and over time, instead of being helpful, they start to have a wear and tear effect on your body. The parts of the brain that early on are associated with memory and simple learning, focusing attention, being able to solve problems, those parts of the brain are very vulnerable to disruption from chronic activation of the stress system.
In the still-face experiment, unresponsiveness was temporary, no harm done. Some stress even promotes healthy coping skills.
The last thing I would wanna communicate here to parents is that they're doing harm to their children, they're not doing harm to their children, if in the midst of all that, there's a failing out of supportive responsiveness.
And what are you doing?
Which is what this mother restores, and what most parents try to sustain. That's if they can, in the midst of the mounting demands and stresses on their daily lives.
Distressors in the lives of parents affect detachment, they affect the ability to engage and serve in return, they affect the ability to provide and meet all of the needs of the child. It's hard to make everything work, you get pulled in all different directions.
There's this feeling of constantly being on a tread folder.
It's too much, I can't do it.
Feeling insecure, I mean, I don't really know what that feels like.
Parents and caregivers are scrambling to fulfill their responsibilities in a society that's unresponsive to family needs.
We've made public problems into private problems without resources, so you have to fix everything yourself.
Funding was cut, they had to close two or three classrooms.
And so we have parents who are strapped, the time, the money, the resources.
My position was transferred overseas, we didn't have any income, that's any parent's worst nightmare.
Thirty-five years ago, wages were rising in tandem with productivity, but since then, while labor productivity continued to rise, the gains of that productivity had been shared less and less with average Americans.
Think I called in last night and picked up another shift and made me the money.
Over the last 40 years, corporate profits reached record highs, middle-class wages have remained stagnant, the value of the federal minimum wage has actually fallen.
You can't survive on minimum wage and take care of two kids, it's just not possible.
As wages for most have stagnated, the cost of housing doubled, medical care quadrupled, and the cost of education increased eightfold.
Sometimes she cries and she's stuck, and she needs somebody to help her.
Parents, they're the beginning of the process. We do not invest enough in parents. I'm Rob Dugger, I'm a partner in a...
Rob Dugger is an economist, and for 15 years was a partner in a multi-billion-dollar hedge fund. Today, he's dedicated to persuading policymakers and business leaders to improve conditions for young children and their families.
When you invest in all kids, all families, you get on a higher growth path, a growth path which provides more opportunity, more revenues, and enables a sustainable economy to generate the kind of jobs and growth that we need.
Like Dugger, Art Rolnik, and a handful of other leading economists have calculated the many benefits the nation would enjoy if its policies assured every child a strong start. The kids were more likely to be literate by the third grade, graduate high school, get a job, pay taxes, stay off welfare, and the crime rate between the two groups goes down 50 percent. They're zeroing in on America's family policies.
Our policies actually actively discourage parents from being able to take care of the children when they're very young. They may instinctively wanna do it, but we don't make it easy for them.
Dad, wait, no, he's silly, girl, that's not the way we go, we go this way.
Ann lives in Boston. She gave birth to little Sylvie just four months ago.
Can you reach it?
She faced the same difficulty most American parents face from the moment their baby is born.
There was no paid maternity leave, but I'm allowed to use sick and vacation time to get paid well enough, 'cause no pay, just remain on the january leave. Hey, are you awake now?
Every major economy on the planet guarantees paid maternity or family leave, except the United States. The result, 40% of new mothers return to work by the time their infants are only three months old, some because they want to, most because they have to.
There you go, what's that? Who are all these people?
This is little Sylvie's first day in childcare. She will be here for eight hours until Ann returns from work.
Here you go, sweetie. I'm gonna miss my baby. I'm a little bit more of a human being in this last month, so I get to actually be awake and aware of the fact that this amazing little thing is starting to smile and giggle and coo, and I'd love to spend more time with her. It's just phenomenal, see, every day something changes, something different that she couldn't do before, or we notice that she's crying in a different way now, that it's louder and her coos are, just they sound different than they did a week ago, and what's that mean? I don't know, is that vocal cords, is that something different? I don't know what it is, but it's exciting to see her be able to do something more every time. So you can just see her little brain working on it. For the mother, it's kind of the thing, the little things that make you go, oh, yay.
If Ann lived 250 miles north in Quebec, Canada, she and her husband could share nine months of paid leave. In Germany, 14 months. In Hungary, more than two years. With the exception of three states, parents in the U.S. are guaranteed only 12 weeks of unpaid family leave, and then only if a parent has worked full-time for a company of 50 or more employees for at least a year. Even these benefits were hard-won, the result of a nine-year ban waged by family advocates beginning in the 1980s. At the time, the number of mothers with young children in the workforce was soaring, but in most states, a woman could be fired if she took time off to have a baby.
Newborns need their parents, and their parents need their jobs. We see the effects of stress on the health of family members. They face job loss, soaring health insurance costs.
Family advocates proposed only unpaid leave.
We eliminated the idea of going for paid leave, not because none of us wanted paid leave, but because it was so beyond what people thought politically, realistically, we could get.
But even the idea of unpaid leave brought fierce opposition from the business community and its political supporters.
Don't force the benefits down our throat or theirs. I am not opposed to babies, or mothers, or fathers. The real issue here is whether the programs described should be federally mandated.
This very bill, this mandated bill, will impose such a cost on American business that will render them even more unable to compete in the world economy.
We were gonna bring down the free enterprise system, as you know, we were going to end capitalism. I can show you the same quotes when we talked about legislation to ban child labor, to establish a minimum wage, the sky will fall, it will kill jobs.
Twice, the Family Medical Leave Act, or FMLA, was passed by Congress. Twice, it went down to presidential veto. The objection, government intrusion in the so-called hive of business of business.
The most powerful political voice in the United States is the American business community, without question, always has been. Most of corporate America is short-term decision-making, because the bottom line gets converted immediately into profits, that gets immediately converted into stock price, translated immediately into values of tens of thousands of stockholders. As a consequence of the sort of short-termism that is pervading our economy, pervading our politics, we are opting to make the wrong decisions very consistently, the wrong decisions for the lifetime success of our American kids.
This is a very poignant moment, and my heart is very foggy.
Congress passed the FMLA a third time, and it was finally signed into law in 1993.
In November.
Even its advocates were disappointed.
First of all, half the workforce isn't covered by the Family Medical Leave Act, and most of all, it's unpaid. So every year, you have nearly 3 million people who are eligible for Family Medical Leave and can't afford to take it. You have a good day, little one. When you understand that those first few months, or that first year of life, when the mother needs to provide that, you know, very sensitive caretaking, to not provide with policy, what women need to choose how to do that for themselves, is saying that you're gonna not pay careful enough attention to these children.
Is this a safe world? What will happen when I feel free? What will happen when I feel hungry? What will happen when I feel scared? Can I count on you? Distressors that a parent may feel that they do not have adequate resources to buffer or cope with can be experienced by the child or influence the child's well-being.
There's no doubt about the fact that if a parent is stressed, that it affects the child, and there's no doubt about that. We're talking about processes here that are, you know, that are at a biological level.
How could parental stress during pregnancy and the first... How could parental stress during pregnancy and the first years of life leave a lasting biological imprint on a child? That's the question Professor Marilyn Essex and dozens of colleagues at the University of Wisconsin-Madison have been asking in a groundbreaking twenty-year study.
Our basic hypothesis was women needing to go back to work for financial reasons sooner than they were ready was not good for either them or their families or the babies.
The study recruited more than five hundred expected parents, mostly white and mostly middle-class. By the time the babies were four months old, data showed a pattern starting to emerge.
They were stressed. They were stressed economically. They were stressed by having to work two jobs. That's when they showed a lot less of that kind of sensitive contingent behavior that is really, really important for moms to show with their babies. They have healthy babies.
When the children were two years old, the study widened its lens.
We began to turn our attention to say, now let's look at long-return effects on the child. But we broadened it to say, let's look at stress more generally.
The things that we tapped were financial stress. We also look at role overload. One of the big issues is time and making sure that you have time with your children and the resources to give your children a good life.
Would early-life parental stress continue to have an impact on the parent's children as they grew up? To find out, the Wisconsin team measured the presence of cortisol in the children's saliva when they were four.
We do have a freezer full of saliva samples.
We had what we called family spit times, where the mom when she had the child, they would spit at the end of the day. And kids thought this was a lot of fun.
Cortisol is a powerful hormone whose presence in saliva indicates activation of the stress response.
What we see is that when moms are reporting a high level of stress in the first year of life, as their child gets older, if they look at their cortisol late in the day, we see that they have higher cortisol levels.
And then those kids, with the higher levels of stress hormone, had more difficulties adjusting to school. They tended to be more anxious.
Come on, buddy. Let's come to the activity.
And withdraw.
Okay, okay.
They tended also to be more passive. They tended to be more aggressive. They had a wide variety of behavior problems.
Another fourteen years of evaluations, videotaping, and testing followed.
From the preschool through first grade. In the file cabinets are the records from third grade through middle school.
Okay, we're gonna run a short localizer scan now.
Recently, new neuroimaging technology enabled the Wisconsin team to see whether or not parental stress might impact the very architecture of their adolescent children's brains. The team especially wanted to look at one critical brain circuit, the connection between the amygdala and prefrontal cortex. The amygdala recognizes threat and sounds the alarm. In turn, the prefrontal cortex signals the amygdala whether the alarm is justified.
We wanna see a good flow of traffic on that highway because that's a highway that's helping that child regulate their emotion on a moment-to-moment basis. How to deal with emotions? When is it appropriate to express emotions? What are good things to feel? What are bad things to feel?
So when you get right in the middle of the amygdala, that was fantastic.
So, was there a difference in these two parts of the brain in those adolescents who'd experienced early-life parental stress?
When we look at another thirteen years old, we see lower connectivity between the amygdala and prefrontal cortex.
For the kids with early stress exposure, it was just way out of whack. What we found was a pattern that absolutely fits with the rest of our data.
It was an amazing thing to see, and to see such strong associations throughout. And this whole pattern then predicted anxiety in these adolescent girls.
It really is setting up a system that responds differently to stress in the future.
When we're stressed out, we're not taking in as much information. We're not functioning as well in our daily lives. We might be getting everything done, but maybe we're not learning as well.
And so it does have an effect on later achievement and academic outcomes. In terms of health and function, we know that they do it worse than kids who are less stressed.
And the ball can keep bouncing. These adolescents are America's future parents.
For the girls in our study who have been exposed to a lot of early-life stress and who have some kind of dysregulation in their stress response system, that prenatal environment for their child is going to be different. And it puts that child at risk. And that continues generation after generation.
Fast on the heels of their child's birth, parents confront another stressful obstacle. The lack of quality, affordable childcare.
We were first looking at daycare when I was pregnant.
Over a year.
Of forty-five nations, the United States ranks thirty-first in availability of childcare, sixteenth in affordability, and, most alarmingly for our children's development, twenty-second in quality. Yamnet and David are just starting life as a family, raising their son Naam and daughter Neem.
Tomorrow's a really hectic day. I have a training. I have to be there at nine o'clock.
Yamnet works full-time and more.
I wouldn't work home with me. It's just what I do so that I don't feel as overwhelmed. Do you need a foot ram raspberries?
David was on a fast track to finishing his education.
I'm the breadwinner. I'm the sugar mama. Hi, honey. Are you ready to try something new?
The clock is ticking a lot of ways. The clock's ticking because you're... That counts for all the clock's ticking because, you know, build your career. But also, you know, once you have kids, you really wanna invest in those early years. You don't wanna treat that time cheaply.
Most parents don't want to think of their baby's well-being in terms of dollars. But how can they not? Nationwide, center-based childcare generally averages more than $10,000 a year per child.
With Naam our first... We've consistently paid more for childcare than for rent.
Oh, yeah?
We're in the... My name's on a waiting list at two places. For Ellis, we were told we're around number forty. I'm really, really holding out for Ellis.
Ellis is Ellis Memorial Child Development Center, one of Boston's best and most affordable. The man for a spot here is hot.
This is our waitlist, and this is the waitlist just for infants and toddlers. It's not crazy, but it's a different world that we live in. They have to get to work.
Now, you guys are gonna think about what you're thankful for. You wanna share? You don't have to if you don't want to. That's okay.
Ellis provides nurturing, child-centered care by skilled teachers like Iona Terrell.
Would you like to share? Go ahead, Lily. What are you thankful for? Now, future inventor, doctor, nurse, whatever this child could be, now is the time that their brains are at work. And you tell us where the road is gonna take you?
It's gonna take you to hospital, I have you.
Teachers are rigorously evaluated. Ellis is safe, clean, and offers a stimulating environment for the early years. It's not only licensed, it's nationally accredited.
Childcare can't be some kind of warehouse because it's more than just taking care of the child for eight hours a day.
I need to find a wig for that. So I wear a curly wig?
Quality early childhood program is an opportunity to invest in the child and to promote the capabilities of the child.
Who are you?
Studies by Helen Art Rolnik and others show that children who receive high-quality care are, on average, better educated, healthier, more productive, and earn higher pay. While lowering the cost to society of unemployment, social services, healthcare, and incarceration.
These kids actually have what economists call a rate of return for each dollar invested. You get back seven percent to ten percent, somewhere between seven and ten percent per annum over the lifetime of the child, which is a huge rate of return. In U.S. stock market, a good portfolio, an average portfolio, would earn about six percent a year. So if you were a financial planner, investor, or if you were a government or somebody asking, where should I put my money? In the stock market or in a young child? You'd say, in a young child.
But that's not where the nation is investing. Across the country, only one in ten childcare centers is accredited. In California, cemeteries are inspected more often than childcare centers. Staff training is often not required, and oversight is lax. The annual median wage for America's childcare workers in 2013 was only $19,600, less than poverty level for a family of three.
Are you ready to start coming in? The backup plan is to get to Ellis.
Ann, it's quite a lot.
And if comes September, that doesn't work out, then David and I will figure something else out.
Step up front.
One, two.
Yamnet and David and millions of American parents would not have to figure something else out if the nation had done what it was on the verge of doing almost forty-five years ago. Back in 1971, Congress passed legislation called the Comprehensive Child Development Act, or CCDA. It offered universal, high-quality childcare, preschool and other services for children from birth to age five, to any and every American family that wanted them. The legislation awaited only a presidential signature to become law.
The word is now that the administration will announce its position next week, and the day of daycare may be approaching in America.
But opponents recast the bill as government intrusion into the individual rights and responsibilities of the family. And at the eleventh hour, President Nixon vetoed the bill. Since the vetoes, millions of families have gone without the kind of quality, affordable care all young children need to flourish. But one of America's largest employers does receive federal funding to provide high-quality, affordable childcare to its employees' families. It regards that care as a top organizational priority.
The most important thing to us is always that our family are taken care of. If our families are taken care of, there's a sense of security out there that we don't have to worry about them, and we can concentrate on the mission.
Here at Camp Pendleton, marine families can send their children to high-quality, on-base child development centers. And not just at Camp Pendleton. The same is available to every branch of the military, to all military personnel regardless of rank. The fees are based on a sliding scale.
We looked at everything from a nanny to not daycare out of town. We wouldn't have been able to afford it. Our non-military friends, they're amazed that we only pay what we pay.
Hi, Kayla. Hi, Kayla. What is that?
Childcare workers receive continuous training. And here, they are paid about fifty percent more than the national civilian median.
We also have our child assessment portfolio, and we communicate daily with our parents.
Are you guys all going down for now?
All centers undergo regular surprise inspections and most all are accredited.
Ready? Okay, there we go. Would you like to be covered?
But it wasn't always this way. In 1982, a standing report found that the military's childcare was among the worst in the nation. So in 1987, sixteen years after the CCDA would have become law for civilians, Congress passed the Military Childcare Act. Military childcare is now widely recognized as among the best in the nation.
Give me tips. I don't ever get to transition them into a civilian CDC after being here. This is just, I don't think anything can compare to the care you get here. There we go.
If we, as a nation, can support the families who protect our national security, why not our civilian workforce, which protects our national prosperity and their children, who will advance our future health, equity, and success?
I didn't need your help.
Talk about people should be able to succeed on their own. This is what this country is all about. But we make it very, very difficult for most of our population.
Parents are working really hard to care for their children, to support their families, to be engaged and productive citizens and members of the community. At the same point in time, it can be like the dice are loaded against them.
The set of workforce policies we now have in place are a crushing burden on parents.
Maintaining family and work-life balance is one of American parents' greatest stresses. With the overwhelming majority of our youngest children living in households where all resident adults work, this is a critical concern.
I work forty hours a week. Leroy works sometimes sixty hours a week. He runs a split shift, so like two in the afternoon to about one, two in the morning.
Leroy is a driver and mechanic, Erica a nurse. Combined, they work more than 100 hours a week. In fact, Americans work more hours annually than most all of our peer nations.
In today's day, we all gotta work. And it's, I can remember back in like my grandfather days, you know, the men were related. The women stayed home and take care of the house and, you know, family and things like that. In today's day, it surely can't happen. Everybody gotta go out and work and, you know what I'm saying? Bring it in.
A growing percentage of Americans work unreliable, precarious schedules which can change from week to week depending on employers' demands.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's something that we have to work on. I do rotate a night, so I, um, missed this week. And so the next week, though, I'll be on days. So it kind of bounces out that way.
Parents are juggling, shifting, trying to balance a variety of competing demands that there just don't seem like there are easy, reasonable solutions. It leads to a level of tension and stress. Is this what we've decided as a society? That this degree of tension, these complex trade-offs are the norm, to be expected, just a part of raising a child.
America's work policies fail to offer relief. The United States is the only rich nation that does not guarantee by law a single-paid vacation day or holiday.
You know, my mom still works forty hours a week, but she... You know, she's a little active for me to leave her with her now. But I also have a sister who has, um, two boys. And she totally stepped up to the plate. I'm not there. I'm entrusting someone else to keep her safe, to teach her, to help her grow in all areas, developmentally, spiritually. You know, we have that, I call it the village. Like, if they laugh at me at work, they're like, who has the baby? I'm like, someone in the village. You know, that kind of thing. Because we can't do it alone.
Nobody does this alone. Nobody does this in isolation. The environment that the family lives in matters.
Neighborhoods may simply not have an adequate opportunity structure to support the families optimally and the children optimally.
Erica, Leroy, and Denia live in the Boston neighborhood of Mattapan, which has struggled with disinvestment and racial segregation for decades. Here, unemployment is more than twice the national average. The banks have grown 500 homes into foreclosure. One in five adults here reports... One in five adults here reports living in persistent sadness.
Some people live in neighborhoods where there are not good schools, where there's no tax base. That's the structure that they live in. And when we look now, we structure race in America. Blacks, Latinos, that won't likely live in those structures. And if you live in that structure, your life outcomes are severely truncated. We know that if we take the same family and expose them to higher opportunity areas, the kids would do better. What we've seen is a tremendous disparity, a growing disparity between the haves and the have-nots. And with it, disparities in the environments of the children, so for the next generation. So it looks bad. And the problem is that if we don't address those inequalities, we're gonna find ourselves living with the consequences of those inequalities.
Thank you. Come on girls.
Those who suffer most from this systemic inequality are of one in four American children born into poverty. Ashley's children, Amelia and London are among them.
You know, I'm definitely struggling, but people tell me, "You're not poor. You're broke. You're not poor."
Because we're so prejudiced, when we see poor people, we're likely to think it's their fault. Europe tends to think if you're poor, it's bad luck and it's a strong problem. The United States tends to think if you're poor, it's your problem.
Ashley and her daughters live on one thousand, one hundred dollars a month, about thirteen thousand dollars a year, well below the poverty line. This is the public assistance Ashley relies on because she's unable to work due to illness, and it's not enough.
My food stamps last me about three weeks. I go through my house and I sell what I can, anything that I can do to get along. Everybody thinks that you get to do the assistance, but you're just lazy and you don't wanna work. That's not the case for the majority, and that's sure not the case for me.
Ashley became a single mother and fell into poverty when she left her husband.
When Amelia was three months old, he became physically abusive towards me. Amelia, what's this one?
No hitting.
Yeah. Amelia was present during all of the assaults and was right next to me.
Stay with mommy.
Stay with mommy.
She was pregnant with her second daughter, London.
While I was working, I ended up going into preterm labor because I had a large uterine tear from him kicking me down the stairs and kicking me in the stomach. And she made it, but she was six weeks early. And during my over twelve weeks stint of being hospitalized, I did a family medical leave, and those are only good for twelve weeks. And then when that ended, my job told me that I had taken up too much time. They just didn't have use for me, and they let me go. So here with two children and no job, it's been one thing after another, unfortunately.
The US child poverty rate ranks thirty-fourth among thirty-five nations, with only Romania behind us.
Mommy, I have things to sell. I'm just worried how am I gonna pay my bills? How am I gonna take care of everything that they need? If I am stressed, when I'm feeling upset or feeling down, they're really gonna think about sending it. Because they'll come up and they'll give me a hug, or my daughter, mind you, don't come up, she'll tell me that she loves me. Can't worry every day if that's gonna affect them.
There are many low-income families who do that magnificent job raising their children.
That's shared, right?
It's the pileup. Low education on top of low income, on top of exposure to violence. The cumulative burden of all of those forces create a sense of chronic crisis, chronic activation of the stress system, what we call toxic stress.
The Wisconsin study found that the stress experienced even by middle-class parents can alter the architecture of their children's developing brains. When parents are poor and struggling, the stress and anxiety they experience can be even greater. And so can the possible impact on their children.
Why is mom upset now? Why are mom and dad yelling? Do I have any food? You have all of these things going on that you really don't have any more cognitive or physical energy to deal with anything else.
You'll find one. We all gotta find one eventually. Your turn, Mia. Amelia is so bright. She's just hilarious. And London is also so funny and is so adorable. But she is facing her own struggles. She's dealing with hypersensitivity. Amelia, you're upsetting her. If you look at her, there are mine. She'll cry. If you tell her to wait a minute, hold on one second, she'll cry.
So close.
Children who have faced the uncertainty of poverty and other adversities may often have a hair-trigger stress response. Being constantly on alert makes sense in a precarious world, but it has consequences.
The adaptation of the individual is functional for dealing with those adversities. But comes at the expense of your ability to then engage in other things, to learn productively in your environment, to engage with others or form relationships. So it comes at a cost. The biggest question is what do we do after a child hasn't faced adversity? And what are we doing to prevent future adversities?
I'd like to think that they're doing really well. I worry every day that I may not be enough for them. I worry, are they happy? Do they feel enough love? I've tried my best to give them everything that I can. If I could give them more, I would. It's hard.
The brain has the ability to continue to grow and develop. It also has the ability to heal. If we can create a reliable, structured social environment that is safe and secure, the capacity of the brain and the human spirit to continue and thrive and develop is beyond what any of us can predict.
What do we all want, French children? We want them to be healthy and thriving. We want them to be growing and learning and being all they can be. We want them to be happy. What could we be doing to strengthen the capacity of everyone who interacts with children to be able to provide more of what they need? What could we do to be smart? Smart societies look ahead, and if they see a cliff, they turn the car and drive this way. They don't need the accident to teach them need to turn the car, need to change direction. We know we've got a crisis, but we're choosing to try to perpetuate the old way of doing things. We've got to make different choices. How can we spread the fabless?
Spread the child to me. Oh, there you are.
How could we strengthen the capacity of this community to provide a safe and nurturing environment to raise children? What kind of role could business play to help support the family life of the people who work for them?
There's a policy gap in this country.
How many signatures do you have here? We've got more than forty-six thousand signatures.
Instead of blaming government programs, we ought to say, "How could we do a better job?"
There is strong and overwhelming evidence that's all saying the same thing. Investing early in the lives of all children is not only cost-effective for the whole society, but improves well-being for all members of society.
If we worked out the problem of actually being inclusive and fair for all children in terms of their productivity as future workers and their productivity as future citizens and members of society, America would explode in terms of creativity, in terms of growth, in terms of ingenuity. If we played it full-dead, this country would explode.
If you think about our future and what America's gonna look like, this is the future right here. Invest in their parents. Invest in these children. They're not gonna fill you, but we can't fill them now.
Turn the sound down. So. Pretty powerful. Who wants to go first? Well, this is why I said we'd probably have a short discussion. So the challenge is gonna be, I mean, there's some, just not stories, but there's some statistics out there that are horrific. And we can't change the United States here. Yes, we can get philosophical about throwing a pebble in the pond and the ripples. So I guess what it's really about is, first of all, being thankful for everybody that showed up, being thankful that it stimulated you enough to start thinking, that those of you that are policymakers are in a position to start laying the foundation for policy, as we are here for the county, so with the schools, so with the city, so with the childcare councils, et cetera, et cetera, CASA, or, um, first five. And so I think that's the next discussion that needs to take place at your boards, at your committees, is how do we make this community, let's lead by example, small little Delmar County. How do we make this community family-friendly? How do we support, how do we communicate that child development is economic development? You know, things like that. So rather than me lecturing, um, this is gonna be shown again, which is a great opportunity. So now you're gonna be the champions. And I would encourage you, what's the date? May? May twenty-sixth at the Elk Valley Rancheria Dinner and Child Care Provided. To attend that, and maybe you will be the ones that will be capable, when they ask for a discussion, to start that discussion. And with Catherine, whether it's at the city council or ourselves at this board, to throw out that challenge. We are gonna be vetting this, in fact, at our next, um, board supervisors meeting, we are gonna be discussing and re-energizing the goal committees. And safe and healthy family goals is obviously gonna be where we're gonna vet a lot of this, and where we're gonna be talking about some of the partners in that, Children's Bill of Rights. So I don't need to keep talking, but, um, you know, they had brief comments when we saw this in Sacramento, and I forget who the assemblywoman was from Southern California, and she just said, "Just another reason to hate tricky dick." So. But anyway, so. Nixon. Yeah, she was older than me, yes. Yes, Stino.
I think about the money that comes from the, and how we collectively come together and start looking at that. Are there more money coming for whole-day childcare from the central level down? But unless we unite as a community and utilize, um, our local planning council, come together and formulate strategic plans of how we're going to, as a community, bring that coming in to reach our children and families. I think our agency and our venture services, I think we've got that in the paper, many of our grant-headed agencies work in silos. And bring them in and make those independent decisions without really telling each other on, you know, what's gonna be best for our community, probably to this collectively. I mean, we've got four new centers for our county, we've got numerous state preschools, private childcare, anyway, childcare is critical and it is crucial.
And that is one of the components, I think, an easy place to start. Not a comfortable place to start, maybe, but is looking, um, as policymakers at our different boards, what is our policy for maternal leave and paternal leave? It just floors me that the only one that's worse is Romania. But anyway, so it's those, there's no one simple, easy fix. It's a lot of different components, but there's a lot of different partners and a lot of different champions in this room, and hopefully more in the next room. Any other final comments, fellow supervisors?
I, I do, I, because I can remember when I took my time off for my children and when it was time to retire, I had less sick days than my male co-teachers because I had, and I can also remember crying that they don't even take puppies away this early. You know, when it came time to go, and I see lots of heads going, "Yep, that's where I was too." There is a process that's called, um, priority-based budgeting. And Belaheo has had to do it because they were on the brink of bankruptcy. And what it did is that they actually brought the community together, and they started talking about what are our priorities? You know, are our priorities having an infant center? Because I had to fight like a mad woman in the eighties to try to get an infant center in Delmar County. You know, so it, but doing it, we, we do it like you, like you said, that we do it in these silos. And this priority-based budgeting brings everybody to the table, and they start talking about what are our communities' priorities? Which is a lot what the Bill of Rights for the children is going to be, and trying to look at a children's... Which is a lot what the Bill of Rights for the children is going to be, and trying to look at a children-based budget. But when the communities all come together, and it's everybody, it's, it's the county government, it's the city government, it's the school, it's, everybody comes together and puts some of their dollars on the table and say, "What are we gonna do to make this a safer, better place for our children? And how, how do we get there?" And literally, they go through this process that everybody who participates gets to end up voting on which projects they think should be driven for, towards the future. And, um, it's anybody who participates that's sixteen years or older in Bilejo. And it's this actually, you know, I have a copy of their ballot that they put out and they do all of this stuff. And it's pretty exciting, and it might be something that we could take a look at and consider when it comes to children, and it might not be the whole pot of money because people are, you know, you're restricted to some of your silo spending. But it may be a way that we can say, "Wow, you know, as a community, we wanna get behind making sure that every neighborhood has a playground." We don't know what that, it's gonna be, but it's, it's a, it's a pretty interesting philosophy of how things work. So if you go online, you can start reading about this, uh, this particip, this priority-based, uh, budgeting and how these communities are doing it. And there are several communities in the United States that are actually making great headway. Where, I'm gonna just finish, where what happens is that there are people that come with their project, you know, and it might be, it might be that I wanna have, uh, new swing sets on every, at every, uh, school. And somebody else might come and say, "Well, I wanna have, um, you know, I wanna have weekend lunch packs taken for children to be able to eat on the weekend." And, but everybody comes together and then all of a sudden people start changing their priority because they see someone else's priority and go, "Whoa, that's what we need to be doing together." So it's pretty exciting stuff, but it takes a community to come together, and it takes that community to come together and not have a big fight on. You know, that's the, that's the key, and that's where, as our community, you all know that it's easier to be at the table and collaborate and come into consensus for an activity, rather than if you walk into the room and there are people on this side and that side and all they wanna do is holler, then we're in big trouble. So I appreciate all of your good work too, because I started as a Head Start teacher and I get it.
So the good news is we're not starting from scratch. Um, there have been efforts. First five, we did the CARES program, we've done preschool education. There's community gardens now. I mean, you take a look at the last half a dozen years, there's, there's a lot of good stuff going on. You got a great board on CASA, uh, and Child Care Council and Children Services, and first five. And, um, the board of supervisors can lead, but we can't do it for everybody. So these policies have to go to the rest of the boards. But not gonna keep you here anymore. It, you know, it's, I think the message is out there is what we wanna do with it now. It can be a very positive stimulus, you know, it's a big cloud over your head now, but use that to come up with some great suggestions for policy. Let's turn the curve in this community to make it something where not only our children are valued, it's no coincidence that the board just did a children's budget and did the Bill of Rights. You know, it's just something else to build on. But, uh, let's start with the continuum and, and take it all the way through. And, and like the guy said, it's, uh, economic development. The people that only understand dollars and cents then tell them about that. The people that are bleeding hearts and you tell them about this sad story. We use whatever tactics we need to make this the community that we're willing to turn our children over to, who are gonna be the ones that are going to have to carry on the economy and take care of us. So let's do, get it right. Thank you. With that, meeting adjourned.